I'll call the Town of Northwood Planning Board in meeting of October 25th, 2018 to order present. Justin Nikoliski, Hal Ryder, Select Persons Rep. Thudrow, Betty Smith, Bob Strobel Chair, Susan Austin, and Linda Smith for Town Staff. We have minutes of October 11th.
Motion to accept the minutes of October 11th.
And a second?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Smith, second by Mr. Nikoliski. Discussion on the minutes. Hearing none. Going once, going twice. Okay?
Nice job.
All those in favor?
Congratulations.
Gold star.
All those in favor of the motion as the minutes has written, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, those abstaining. And just for the record, voting designation is all members present. We have...our first case tonight is 18-13 Ledgewood Realty Trust.
Mr. Chairman, I did receive a request for continuance to the next meeting, next regularly scheduled meeting. The applicant has decided to add a additional crossing which requires them to go back to the Conservation Commission and back to the zoning board before coming here. So, they have requested that this board continue the consideration for completeness next month.
So that would be November 29th? And just for procedural clarification, because of their requested change, they need...they would need approval from the ZBA and Conservation Commission before we can hear their application? Or can we pursue this in parallel?
Well, the issue at hand is, I looked at the public notice and it doesn't list the number of crossings or such, so I think that it'll just be continued for...without an additional public notice, but they do need to come back and complete it with the zoning board.
Okay.
The Conservation Commission's role is to review and provide comment to the zoning board, not to actually vote yea or nay on it.
Okay.
So, until the zoning board grants that special exception, it's best that the Commission...I mean, the Planning Board not take the case up because making a...
Sure.
An approval with a special exception hanging is not the best idea.
Yes. We're just thinking of timeframe, if the ZBA is meeting last Monday of November.
I think we're good.
You think we're good? Okay.
I'm gonna check right now.
Just double checking.
The 26th, right?
Yeah, I think they're...they are meeting on the 26th, so there's a possibility that the zoning board will have acted on it. If not, we can take it up at that point. The other thing I would like to mention is that the zoning board has set a site walk for November 17th, and if this board would like to join, we could...people could attend that because it is a public site walk. However, it's a similar situation to the one that we had up at the Eames property where you can go to observe only, not in any way to discuss any aspect of the Planning Board part of it, such as any aspect that relates to the authority of the Planning Board. But you can go on that walk and take a look at the property, gather some information.
Is it acceptable to ask questions if we want clarification?
Yes, I believe that's...
Okay, but we shouldn't discuss it?
I would stay away from details about the application where the board has not accepted it as complete yet and won't at that time.
And when is that again, please, Linda?
November 17th, and we will send out a notice to...and they have also asked to invite the Conservation to that, I think.
That's great.
Nine o'clock, 10 o'clock, do we know? What time?
Nine, 9:00 AM?
I wasn't sure if it was 9:00 or 9:30. I'm gonna check on that, but we'll let you know. It is first thing in the morning with 9:00, 9:30, it's not later in the day. Well, not first thing, but you know what I mean.
Yeah.
I can tell you right now, I have my notes.
Nine-ish.
Can we bring coffee?
17th of November.
Is that going to prove for the continuance or...
Not yet.
Oh, okay.
I forgot what I was about to do.
I just wanted to be sure we didn't get by yet.
So, we would need to decide whether we want to approve the request for continuance. And entertain a motion to that effect.
Still moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Smith, B. Smith, second by Mr. Nikoliski to, adding to the motion to continue the hearing of completeness for case 18-13 to November 29th. Discussion on that?
So, Bob, I just wanna make sure I understand. We've not accepted it as complete, so we're only continuing the discussion on the...
Correct.
As to whether to determine that they've completed everything necessary.
Correct.
Okay, so we're not further along and extending out the two-month thing that we have and everything?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
I won't be here that evening. I have a select meeting at school.
Okay. That's...you're a busy person to begin with.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
It was why I'm sick for two weeks.
You were one of the...allowed to do that. Okay, so discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Those in favor of continuing 18-13 to November 29th, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, those abstaining, okay.
If I could interrupt for just a second, I probably misheard you, but did you say there was a selectmen meeting that night?
The 29th, we have, it's a joint selectmen school board meeting regarding...
Here or up there?
At the school.
Oh, okay.
Regarding the SRO.
I'm just concerned if...
No, no.
Because we...
They're hosting, we're co-hosting, I guess.
Okay, thank you.
Anticipating for sure.
Yes.
And just note, Ms. Baldwin has joined us at 6:40 and has added to the voting designation. Okay. Next case is 18-18, Michael and Sharon Saroyes. You can come to the table now.
One more, so we'd like to have...get that over there.
Put that wherever you think. Sorry? It's okay. Me reaching.
Do you have a group of them or...
Yeah.
Because they're going to need to have the updated plans and kind of that. So, if they're gonna give me, we'll pass them over.
Those are different than what we got last time?
Yeah, what he did was he made corrections based on James's...
Based on the comments, so... In those...you should have in front of you a copy of the updated review comments and...
So, how about...
He's got one.
Yep, I have one.
Did I get a copy of this good morning list of the ones?
Which, I think I passed out.
Do you want to share instead, that way?
Yes.
Okay, in the corner like that?
Okay.
Well, my friend might have a little speed.
And Linda, you have a copy of the new one?
Okay.
Remember to put that on the paper?
Yes, this one has a 10-22. So, if everybody wants to just put the other ones on the floor, we can pick them up later if they have them. You should have just the one that has the revision date on the revision block.
Okay.
Are you gonna be able to see that okay?
Yeah.
Looks pretty small.
You probably have it memorized.
Hopefully.
Based on the fact that we just got this drawing and that we have a revised staff notes, why don't we take a couple, up to five minutes to review that just before we get a chance?
Do you wanna cover it or whatever? Just the drawing?
I'll move it back, Gary.
Yes, I do need this. Thank you.
Yes.
I have one, at least for the chairman to have. A waiver request.
Susan, can you hear that? Not? It's all...
It's just a tone. It's bad. I think it's settled maybe the other day.
So, it's just like you start coming up?
Yep.
Okay.
Hmm. Stay here. Back there. Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Hmm.
Ready to go?
Ready.
Want to double check? First order of business is to find the application complete or not, and if not, why not? Entertain a motion to that effect.
Still moved.
Second.
Two are on the roll. Ms. B. Smith and Mr. Nikoliski have made the motion for completeness and second. Discussion on that? None. All those in favor of finding application 18-18 complete, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, those abstaining. Okay. And just for the record, the voting designation is all members present. Okay, welcome. So, we found the application complete. You're on the clock. That essentially means we have...we collectively have 65 days to make a decision under whatever RSA it is that applies for that. Generally, it doesn't take us that long, but that's the law, and we operate by it. If, for some reason, the clock runs out, either we can make a decision based on the information we have at that point in time, or you can ask for an extension. Somehow, I don't think it's gonna take that long, but I'd at least like to explain where we're at. Why don't you introduce yourselves and give us an idea of what you want to do? It's always nice to hear it from the applicant.
Hey, my name is Michael Saroye. This is my wife, Sharon. Sharon owns the property. What we're looking to do is, this is where we're gonna wind up retiring, okay? And I had a business in Dover. I worked full-time at Portman Leadership Yard since 2009, and I've operated this business since 1998. It was full-time until 2009, then I switched it over to part-time. But basically, it's like one of the most awesomest hobby shops you could have. I design and build automation equipment. My tool and die make up my trade, and I own quite a bit of equipment. They're tearing the building down in Dover, so I've had to relocate, and currently, everything's in storage, and it's costing about 1,300 a month in storage. So, what I was looking to do was building a building comparable to the size of the one that I had where we were planning on retiring. We planned on building a house further down the road, but we were gonna set that up first to at least get the machine out of...machinery out of storage.
Mm-hmm.
And we're gonna go from there.
Okay.
So, that's what we were proposing. That's why it's 2,400 square feet, 30 by 80.
Okay. And you saw Mr. Burden's notes?
Yeah, yes, I did.
Looks like you addressed...
I saw an initial email, and then P. Landry, and I also tried to answer them, thus we couldn't...
Questions from the board?
The paved driveway, does that serve several lots?
The paved driveway goes...it goes...it's not paved all the way in, it's paved into...
It's paved in just past the curb where you see the line going across.
To the right-hand side there, when you look from the road.
When it comes in off of Harmony Road, then curves to the right, and you see a line going across the road. That line is the end of the pavement.
Right. I guess what I'm asking though is...
Yeah, there are two places that have a right-of-way to...well, actually, three.
Two other easements, three easements, coming off of that driveway.
And so, those gravel portions to the left are for access to 2312, or 12312?
At this point, yeah.
Curran's.
And whatever the next lot...
If you look at the...if you look at the...what she has on the screen, they access 223-003-000, and also 223-002, I believe, right at the point.
Yeah.
They come...one comes in and curls off to the left, that's the one that you see the trails just beyond the power line easement, well, the electrical easement. Then you see the other two come off, ranch off to the left, further down the driveway.
Okay, well, just so you know where I'm coming from...
Yes.
Where are you gonna park your vehicle when you're at the building?
Where I'm at the building, I'm gonna park right in front of the building. Where it says proposed.
Proposed gravel drive.
Okay. And is that big enough for like the trucks and different things that you'll have, or is it just your...
It's just a personal vehicle. It's just a personal vehicle.
Is that area big enough?
Oh, yeah. It's actually, I think it's up to...
It's 30 feet. The width of the...depth of the building is 30 feet, so...
Yeah, 780 square feet is planned for parking.
And our parking area is nine by 18.
Yeah, I'm just concerned that, you know, other people using the driveway aren't gonna get blocked if the...
Oh, no. Not blocked at all.
This is off the driveway. It's off the road.
It's in Mr. Burden's notes.
Yeah.
Up on item note one on the detail...on the plan, says 780 square feet.
Betty, just a...I know it's in Jim's notes, or James's notes, that there's sufficient space, but I'm concerned...I was concerned about the length of the vehicle, and you're saying this is 30, at least 30 feet here?
The building...
Yeah, the building's 30 feet wide.
30 feet wide.
So, it's at least 15 feet back off of that driveway, and at least 30 feet on the other side. So, there's more than a room for one vehicle.
On the side by proposed tree line, that's about...
Yep.
About 30 feet long.
I don't have any big trucks.
Where the word proposed.
You'll want one next, yeah.
No, I'm good.
It's new. That's all I get.
What kind of manufacturing was this again?
Light, light industrial, it's a machine shop. So, making different parts.
Okay. So, would there ever be, like, raw material deliveries from, say, like a tractor trailer or anything like that?
No, no tractor trailers, period.
Okay.
The only tractor trailer that would appear would be unloading machinery, and that's it.
Unloading what?
The machinery.
Oh, okay.
Moving in.
Moving in. Right, okay.
So, just like big trucks, like a UPS truck?
No bigger than a UPS truck, yeah. UPS, US Mail, FedEx.
Okay.
And is there a restroom or anything like that in this building?
No, no, I wasn't putting any water or sewer in there because I really don't use any water or sewer, because I have that house down at the very end of the driveway.
So, it's gonna be basically a shell? It's gonna be almost like just a...
A heat shell?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
It's a heat shed, right? Really big heat shed.
Sheesh, man.
Heat shed's gonna be near the light.
There we go.
You can serve notice in public.
Yeah, look at that.
Okay. And I'll just use the adjacent lots that share the driveway, Lucy and Curran, may have rights of way?
Yes.
Do we need those shown on this plan?
They are, I think.
They are shown on the plan.
They're shown, I don't know that you need to designate them as such.
Yeah, well, yeah, sorry. They are shown, the fact that there is a right-of-way is the only thing I was thinking of.
It could be a note added to the plan as a condition. Who has DDD easements?
Yes. That would be...that'd be the only... Because the...you're making changes to that, it's also, I guess I'd say that's more of a protection for the town than anything else, to record the fact that it is there. And I'll give you a better chance to speak before, but are either the Currens or the Lucys here?
Mr. Lucy's here.
Mr. Lucy's, okay. You mind asking, do you know if your deed has that right-of-way?
Yes, it does have.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, just double...more double...
I believe that that is on...we actually own all three of the properties to the left of it.
Okay.
Well, it's actually two properties, three lots.
Okay.
Yeah, but we haven't seen the plans at all. Here, I was...
Oh.
We're not inclusive to us coming up here and making this up.
You brought another chair, you can take a look.
I see one on the light, I didn't see anyone in there. Yeah, yeah.
So, basically, we're getting this building off the side of the driveway, up towards the clock.
So, will they be removing that existing house of stairs? There's two existing houses. Oh, they removed on Harmony, oh.
Yeah, way up by the...
Oh, I don't think they removed.
We haven't, we don't...we also got us a letter, and we didn't get any...
Yeah, no, these are...these are the ones that are on the...
So, this is additional building to the ones we already owned out.
So, when you first turn in the driveway, it's gonna be right off on the right-hand side?
Yes.
They are the two there. It's still, it's still there, they're there. Yeah.
Michael, do you have three-phase power there?
No, I'm gonna run a phase converter. We're running phase converters. I don't plan on running all the machinery at the same time, so I had three-phase service where I was.
That's why I asked, I sort of assumed you didn't.
Yeah, it'd be very expensive to run the three-phase down a half-mile.
Yeah.
So, I was planning on just running 220 single-phase and then converting to three-phase. I was gonna get some phase, a couple of phase converters.
I didn't think it was down that way.
No, the single-phase's down, I had to check that.
Okay. Other questions from the board?
I have a question related to the lighting, only because I always have concerns about the lighting disturbing other people, but I guess, Bob, we have a lighting ordinance, correct?
Correct, we do.
So, as long as your lighting meets the lighting ordinance standards, just please make sure you know what they are and...
Okay.
There is an addition of note one about the lighting, in the upper-left-hand corner. I believe it's on the...
Yeah, it's on the...
Exterior lighting would be mandatory.
Yeah, it's going down on the...right on the plan.
Oh, to be directed downward. Yeah, okay, good.
And I was gonna have that motion rejected anyway.
Streetlight things on their house anywhere.
As long as they don't fire up. And it looks like the...you have a single light...
Just so I can see it again.
Just at the ridge, below the ridge?
Yeah.
Okay. Just double check.
Do you consider tutoring the high school students?
If they're interested in my work, yeah, I can.
I bet they would be.
Because I was...I used to train, while I was training, we were at the Chippy Yard, so I was training the machines there.
Yeah, I think...
Charged that training program.
I think that's gonna be an up-and-coming skill.
Yeah, it kinda went away for a while.
Okay.
Sorry for the diversion.
You're good. You're good. Okay. Okay, at this point, while the board's thinking about the waiver, I'll open 18-18 to public comment. The only requirement is they have to use a microphone. And if Linda wants to turn that one there, that's fine?
10 years on the planning board, so I have no problem with that.
Okay.
Good afternoon, thank you. My name is Michelle Kern, this is my husband, Stephen Kern. As I had mentioned before, we own the parcels just to the left of it. Just a couple of questions, and again, for our own curiosity. I know you said not a lot of traffic, you're expecting your deliveries to be UPS or Fed Mail, whatnot, simple as that. One of the issues that we have all the time without there being any sort of business on that road is, we're actually a dead end, so people will come out of curiosity, go all the way down into our...and we're constantly being surprised by people that are curious or whatnot. So, unfortunately, they don't go to the Lucys, they go to the left.
I meant, we went down and visited.
Well, we've had many visitors.
Yeah, where we are in Barrington, we have the same issue.
Yeah, so we're concerned about that, so some sort of...
No, I'm gonna run a phase converter. I'm gonna run phase converters. I don't plan on running all the machinery at the same time. So I had three-phase service where I was.
That's why I asked, I sort of assumed you did.
Yeah, it'd be very expensive to run the three-phase down a half mile. So I was planning on just running, uh, two-twenty single-phase and then converting to three-phase. I was gonna get some fa-, uh, couple of phase converters.
I didn't think it was down that way.
No, the single-phase's down, I had to check that.
Okay, other questions from the board?
Uh, I have a question related to the lighting, only 'cause, uh, I, I always have concerns about the lighting disturbing other people. But I guess, Bob, we have a lighting ordinance, correct? So as long as your lighting meets the lighting ordinance standards, just please make sure you know what they are and-
Okay.
There is a, an addition of, uh, a note one about the lighting, in the upper left-hand corner.
Note one?
I believe it's on the one.
Yeah, it's on the, yeah.
Exterior lighting would be mounted.
Oh, to be mounted, directed downward.
Right on the plan.
Yeah, okay, good.
And I was gonna have that motion detected anyway.
Streetlight things on their house anymore.
As long as they don't fire up. And it looks like the, uh, you have a single light-
Just so I can see it again.
Just at the ridge, at the, below the ridge?
Yeah.
Okay, just double checking.
Do you consider tutoring the high school students?
If they're interested in my working, yeah, I can.
I thought they would be.
'Cause I was, I used to train, while I was training, we were at the Chippie High, so I was training the, the students there.
Yeah, I think-
Charged that training program.
I think that's gonna be an up-and-coming skill.
Yeah, it kinda went away for a while.
Okay.
All right, for the diversion.
You're good. You're good. Okay, at this point, while the board's thinking about the waiver, I'll open eighteen-eighteen to public comment. The only requirement is they have to use a microphone, and if Linda wants to turn that one there, that's fine?
Ten years on the planning board, so I have no problem with that. Good afternoon, thank you. My name is Michelle Kern, this is my husband, Stephen Kern. As I had mentioned before, we own the parcels just to the left of it. Just a couple of questions, and again, for our own curiosity. I know you said not a lot of traffic, you're expecting your deliveries to be UPS or Fed Mail, whatnot, simple as that. One of the issues that we have all the time without there being any sort of business on that road is, we're actually a dead end. So people will come out of curiosity, go all the way down into our, and we're constantly being surprised by people that are curious or whatnot. So unfortunately, they don't go to the Lucys, they go to the left.
I meant, we went down and visited.
Well, we've had many visitors.
Yeah, where we are in Barrington, we have the same issue.
So we're concerned about that, so some sort of deterrent, um, so that, you know, it, it takes a while, and you get new drivers all the time. We really, you know, do not welcome the traffic. We live on a peninsula for a reason. The hours of operation that you hope to have?
Currently, right now, while I'm employed, it's, uh, gonna be five o'clock till like seven-thirty. That's where it had been Monday through Thursday.
Is that on the plan someplace?
It is not, I have that as a note to bring up. I noticed it wasn't on the plan, it is in there. But I would suggest, as the board always does, uh, to put the hours of operation down as the outside hours that you might have, say, a year from now, if you anticipate they're going to increase?
No, they're gonna stay pretty much the same. It's been that way for over nine years.
Oh, okay.
My wife doesn't like it when I wear past eight o'clock. And on Fridays, Saturdays, or Sundays.
Um, will there be any employees other than yourself?
No, just me. I've never wanted to lay off or fire anybody. I did enough of that in my career, that, it's just me.
The building, I know you had mentioned before about a shell, do you plan on doing anything about insulation?
Oh, it's gonna be fully insulated.
Fully insulated, okay.
Yeah, I'm more concerned about, I don't, my process, I don't use any water. I mean, I have a YREDM, but any, any soluble, uh, water soluble cutting fluids, those are subject to just evaporation as far as water. Um, I was gonna use forced hot air for a heating system. The air conditioning system is fully contained, and it's a closed-loop system. So it's just a normal-
The reason I mention it, even though it's so far away from our property-
Noise.
In, noise, biggest concern, but in, um, in their infinite wisdom, you notice that the tree line has been cut around all the poles. You know how you lost power three times last year?
Right.
Because someone didn't recognize the fact that trees should need supporting trees?
Yeah.
Yeah, so they've created a tunnel, so you're gonna be directly across from that tunnel, which means that any noise or, or traffic or whatnot, it is a direct route into our property. Do you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I do.
'Cause they, they've created a channel, they took down all the trees, they cleared the power lines, they did fifteen feet.
Yep.
So we, they took down all the poles, every storm we had, the power company had to come out and redo new poles, everybody got new everything. Um, there was no supporting trees, so now there's just this great big line from this driveway, right across from where he's proposing this building, to our property. So I'm concerned that, normally there would have been a tree buffer there, it's gone. There's no tree buffer there. That leads to my next question, sorry. Um, are there gonna be any landscaping proposed or fencing of the area at all?
No, I wasn't planning on that. I was planning on clearing just a buffer to put the building in. Is that legal?
No, is it a waiver? Usually, it depends on the town, I'm not, I'm not familiar with yard ordinances, I know in our town, there's usually a, um-
Well, there is, a landscaping is planned, however, uh, there is a proposed tree line, the only thing we have is a buffer, uh, in, certainly, if we're, can ask about that proposed tree line, what-
Is that an exist-, the existing tree line?
No, the existing tree line, you see the edge of the power line?
Are these trees here?
Yes.
Very spate.
Yeah.
Oh, then they've met the, they've definitely met the regulations, I should think.
Alright, so, so no proposed, yeah.
That's that big oak tree.
Mm-hmm, yeah, right as you go in, yeah.
The regulation requires a buffering, but it appears that-
There's, there's no buffer on this side, that, this is what I'm saying, all of these-
Is there a house here or anything?
Our house is right here. The power line runs along, this used to be a tree buffer, and it's-
But that's all forest, it's still in there, except for where the easement is for the power lines.
This tree line still continues, this tree line's still here. I get what you're saying about there is a swamp already-
Yeah, there's nothing there anymore.
And they took it out periodically, I mean, I think she's talked-
Everything, yeah, they took, they took from this, all the way down this way, so everything across from him, this is all gone.
Yeah, those are, no, we're talking-
No, which I went right to this-
But that's under the power line.
No, that's what I'm saying, usually there's an ordinance that they have to put in some sort of landscaping to soften the look of the building, or-
It would be in the road.
It's one of the corporate bits of residential, it's not great, but, yeah, it's not there. And then here is this tree, or it can be a natural buffer or landscaping.
Okay. So when you drive down Harmony, you're just gonna see this, this big building? There won't be anything, there, no fencing or any nat-, anything put back naturally to-
It wasn't raised in, I, I think the street trees are only required on state roads, not-
And again, I'm not familiar with yard ordinances.
Yeah, I think under the landscaping, they've met the buffers. Just so you understand, our planner reviews this-
Oh yes.
And, uh, he isn't here tonight, so any questions, we're just trying to catch up a little as you asked him. He did not note anything on there as far as-
Because this is all trees now.
Oh, all trees, wait.
I'm gonna take both of them.
Um, that and the noise, the noise is the biggest concern. We go there for peace and quiet.
You're not gonna even, I mean, the people next door to him now never even knew he was there.
Okay, let's see. They cut here, yeah, but still.
So it's thirty by eight?
Overhead utility.
Oh, okay.
So just to, for our own clarification, on your plan, you have indicated the overhead utility line-
Mm-hmm.
That essentially goes from, looks like the corner of this twenty-foot setback, to the-
Yeah, actually, when you look at the twenty-foot setback, when you see the obtuse angle right there across from DM, that's the center of the easement, for the power line.
Okay.
And when you look further in, you see the lighter, like wavy line, that's where the tree line is currently.
Yes.
Right?
Yep. And that's, so that's, the utility cut has been shown on this?
Yes, it's shown there.
Okay, okay. That's what I was double checking.
On the minor, there's, there's very low, I, it's only along state highways that trees are recorded along the front. Landscaping is required to buffer, but he's got trees which, under a minor, would be covered by that, and the, um, also for the, to buffer any views, uh, requires a, um, a, a buffer of trees will cover for that. It doesn't actually have to be planting.
Okay.
Is there a, one thing I, I don't see on there is solid waste of, of, yeah, what do you call it?
Dumpster?
Dumpster.
Dumpster, I was thinking of compact or dumpster.
I don't use one.
Okay, just a trash pile, so other than that, it's, dumpster would need to be screened, but other than that, it's typical.
Only other thing I think of is, is snow storage.
That, that's what I was gonna ask next, is snow storage.
That could be, well, I'm like, I can answer for you.
Oh, snow storage?
Where'd you put snow storage? I can see a spot for it, but I'm not gonna tell you where it is.
Yeah, it's off, it's off to the right, behind the big oak tree.
Yeah, that'll work.
Are those oak trees staying?
Excuse me?
Are those oak trees staying? Except for the one that's in the middle of the building?
Yeah, yeah, there's two.
That could be a treehouse then.
Oh, yeah.
Right, there's two that would be in the way of the building, but the big one before the curve in the road is staying.
Okay.
I assume that's why it's darker.
Yeah.
And I don't even mind if I gotta bother with that. Is that actually one, is that, I know that's on major, is it on minor, snow storage?
Uh, it's getting tricky hard. I was thinking it was major, no.
I don't, I don't remember.
Which I haven't called this board asking for snow storage. If they're willing to add it, that's fine.
Well, if they don't, if it's not required-
Yeah, we can't force them.
But you gotta come up with here. Yeah, yeah.
Okay, other questions?
Michael, uh, oh.
Ask me.
We thought, we thought it was gonna be down here.
We could ask them to allow the vegetation by the stone wall here, within the twenty-foot setback, to grow up.
You can't, it's the power lines.
Right, so what happened, I've been out there for thirty years, and-
Oh, that, oh, this-
Three times in that time period.
Oh, right in the front here?
Yeah, so it grows up, it grows up to be ten or twelve feet high, and then they come through and-
I thought you were talking about this over here, you're, you're talking about-
Yes.
I think it was, was it, it might have been this past year or last summer, yeah.
Oh, that's what, oh.
Yeah, it's kind of a shock, I'm gonna do it, it grows up, and then you come home one day and it's like a tornado in front of you.
Oh, so they, oh, so yeah, you don't have any control over that.
They come and just clear it?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so there's nothing really that they can do to buffer that?
Just, just so we can, that's what I'm saying.
Oh, sure, that's the best way, and then you can only zoom in as well if you want to later.
There's no recorded utility easement.
I, I found that goes both ways.
You would think if, if anybody would have done so, it would have been the utility company, but so be it.
They did.
Yeah, they did.
Possession's not intense, right?
Yep.
But I, I've seen others, not here, but other, others where there's easements, and then you go back and there's no-
Nothing you can do about it, so, just the fact that you record it, that's fine.
Bob, what's, is it within our purview to ask for a, like, a sign saying no?
We'll get that.
Okay.
We'll address that after the other public comment.
Okay.
Do you have anything more?
No, thank you.
Anyone else like to speak on this application? Going once, going twice. Okay, I'll close public comment at this point for eighteen dash eighteen. And I think what, to address the Currens' issue of, of, uh, let's call it, uh, turnarounds, does, asking not as planning board member, but as recollection from when I had another job, different job, for E nine-one-one, for shared driveways, if there were a certain threshold of residences or structures served by that, we would recommend that a road be given a private, a name, based on, you know, if there's more than, I think it was more than three.
That, that's how that got Lufkin Drive.
Okay, so it is, it already has it.
It already has a name under E nine-one-one.
Okay.
It used to be one sixty-one C Harmony Road.
Yes.
A B C, something like that. And then, and then under E nine-one-one, they changed it to Lufkin, and that, I think also, before that, we didn't have a street sign.
Right.
And so we didn't have as much traffic on that, and then once you put the street sign up there, and it doesn't have a private sign on top of it, but we could put a private sign on top of it.
I think that might help. 'Cause the impression I get is that it's people assuming that it's a public road and turning in to take a look.
'Cause they see the street sign.
'Cause they see the street sign?
Yeah.
If they see private, I know-
And I think a lot of it's curiosity, to be honest with you.
Right.
Because it, there's no place after us, it's the water.
Right, right, and I think it's exactly that, people are driving down to see if there's a dock or some matter of fact, that's just my supposition.
When they come straight in, they can see our place and his place, and there's cars there, so they don't go that way, but when they go towards their house, it just looks like a dirt road, so.
But I, I wonder what the board feels about that, about putting a, a private sign on, or flat tag on top of the street sign of Lufkin Drive?
I think it's a civil matter between the property owners.
Yeah, I would agree.
I don't think there's any regulation that-
There's no regulation there, I'm just more-
It's a polite thing to do.
It would be a very nice thing to do.
Yep.
All of us are here.
Yes, all of us are here.
No, it's, it's above and beyond our purview.
Okay, no, I can do that.
I like to, if there is a statement that is made by an butter, I like to at least have something, even if it's not within-
I wouldn't mind putting one up just for us, for us sake, so it's, I don't have a problem with that at all.
Is that building gonna be marked at all with any type of signage to-
It's on note one.
Is it on note one?
Then it's gonna be mounted on the building.
It was a license plate.
It's a license plate.
Okay.
So it's really big.
But it's reflective.
Yes, it is.
You're talking to the queen of signs.
Yeah.
So going through the, well, we have a waiver to deal with. Let's, if you should have gotten the letter that I passed out earlier, dated October twenty-second, and it's the waiver request dealing that goes along with James's note six, and a request for waiver seven B, Rowan seven, minimum, minimal site plan, or minimum plan requirements. Questions?
Actually, I do have, just on the roof runoff, I, I see the detail there, which is really nice, that's what they recommend in the, like, the Shoreland Protection Act and stuff.
Exactly.
I assume that's what drains back down the, towards the length of the-
Yeah. The building.
This way, this way.
Yeah.
It would dr- drain toward the driveway.
It's a pitch, yeah. Pass it again, please.
Would, yeah, which way would the, you know, for the roof drains, which way would they actually ultimately, would the water run off?
Ah, towards Harmony Road and towards-
Towards the back.
Oh, yeah, yeah. So it's pitched.
So it would drain, the building's high enough that it would drain both ways?
Yes.
As opposed to having to run the length?
Yes.
I got it, yeah, yeah, that's pretty much what they recommend.
On, um, number two for recommended conditions of approval?
I don't know, but it came to the third effect.
So would that basically be, the condition be that we get some type of letter or email from a road agent? Or is it, is it, I'm, I'm a little confused on number two, where it says the applicant will have to contact a road agent for driveway opinion?
I thought that-
I just, I, I don't know, maybe I'm missing some, I, maybe I just blanked out, I'm just, I got a little confused, I'm, I just got a little confused.
There currently isn't a road agent right now.
That's why I get no calls.
That's why, you're not getting a call back. You thought it was us.
I was only slightly frustrated.
Oh, no.
Yep, we're working, this budgerell's working on that.
Yeah, trying.
I'm just trying to think, uh, is it driveway off of a private driveway?
I mean, it's our driveway.
Yeah, right, so does it-
The driveway's existing.
Yeah.
They don't need a driveway.
'Cause typically the road agent is involved up to the point where-
It's a driveway off of a public road.
Yeah.
It's a driveway, it's a driveway off of a, two private driveways, so we really don't have-
So they, so they don't need that, then?
Yeah, so they're-
Yeah, as long as we're saying the existing driveway's okay, which, which- Yeah, as long as we're saying the existing driveway is okay, which, which note three-
Missing driveway is there.
Right.
Yeah, well, note three says it was pre-dates the ordinance, so it doesn't have to move or anything.
Right.
I think it's good.
So eliminate that.
We're not changing, if we're not adding water at all, then I don't think we need.
So.
I think that might just be whatever.
Yep. Number three is obsolete as well?
Well, we still gotta do the waiver, so I didn't wanna get any conditions yet, that's okay.
Sorry, I just was reading ahead.
Okay. We'll, we'll deal with it eventually, so.
Yeah, maybe I was reading the wrong thing. I think I was reading the wrong thing.
Okay, uh, so let's, I think, did we make a motion on the waiver? No.
Not yet.
We just gave a chance to read it. So entertain a motion.
Still moved.
Second. We'll give it to Ms. Baldwin this time. So motion by Ms. B Smith, second by Ms. Baldwin to approve, I assuming, the waiver request for Roman seven B, minimum site, minimum site plan, air plan requirements. Discussion?
I'm sort of assuming all of this is wetlands down through here, or this is the area we're talking about and it's all pretty wet, is that what we're saying?
Yeah.
Essentially, yeah, it's the, the northeast corner of-
Yeah, and they're saying they don't wanna send a surveyor into the swamp to, just to-
Oh, he delineated the edge of it.
Yeah, they delineated the edge, just-
It's, it's not that wet, it's low, right. But even with the high water, it hasn't been-
But we know where the edge of the wetlands is and you're not proposing anything over there, so
Right.
Doesn't, doesn't really help to survey.
And it's indicated by a limited delegation, so
Yeah.
There's, they haven't surveyed it and they've indicated the approximate line that's surveyed, as per James's notes as well. So I think we're fairly well covered. They're fairly well, collectively, covered by not making claims that there's something there. So, further discussion? Done. All those in favor of granting the waiver for Roman seven, or B, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those abstaining? Okay. Okay, so we have the waiver. And what I have, and Linda can confirm with this, for I would like to discuss the draft of conditions of approval with, before before we actually go through the motion of approving it. So the following changes will may be made to the plan set, labeled the, well, you've labeled the survey, surveyed property line as such. You added the note to the drive, paved driveway, which is note three. And you identified the location of the outdoor lighting fixture. So what I have is the well, the Curran's have indicated, you have all three properties, budding properties?
All three lots, two properties. Lucy's own, they're one in the front.
Okay, so Lucy and Curran that is indicated on this are both on yours. And you're confident that you have the right of way in your deed?
Yes.
Okay, so I will skip that then. So I think the only thing we have is the hours of operation.
May I just, you're gonna add it to the plan anyway, correct? Just, just so that gets brought
Exactly.
Forward.
Yep.
So that twenty years from now, we don't have to pull the deed and say, but-
Correct. And what did you have as your hours of operation? I was a-
Five.
Five.
Five, ten, seven, thirty.
I mean, what about a Saturday? You can work on a Saturday.
I was working on a Saturday.
I highly recommend.
Not working on a Saturday. No, no.
Any hour you may work in the future.
That was good. You really are going for that cheat habit. Take what you think you would add, or you would want to work, and expand it to an hour, two hours, to reasonable-
Another one's down the road.
Right, right.
The possibility is.
You don't wanna have to come back.
In case you get a delivery, you wanna work late, something to that effect, you know, the there have been other circumstances in this town where, uh, let's say neighbors are not quite neighborly and the exact, you know, nine oh five, if the UPS truck is there and the hours are on the plan are nine o'clock, you know, a call is mad.
I would say Monday through, Monday through Thursday, nine, two, five. And I would say Friday till noon, nine to noon.
You can't do nine to five, I'm not even gonna get there until five oh five.
Wait, but he said expand it too, so what do I say?
Oh, so you're saying from nine AM to seven thirty?
You just said before, from nine-
Nine AM to seven thirty.
Monday through Friday.
Monday through Thursday. Friday would be nine, two, twelve.
Noon?
Yeah.
What about Saturday?
No Saturday.
Okay, so that would be just a matter of adding those hours-
She might drive you crazy one Saturday.
She drives me crazy now. No, uh.
You do nine to one on Saturday.
Nine to one on Saturday. And those hours, if anything, nine to one.
Okay.
If those hours ever change, they would go less than seven thirty P M.
And never on Sunday?
Never on Sunday.
Never on Saturday.
No, Saturday's at nine to one.
You said nine to one on Saturday in case she throws them out of the house.
Oh, Friday and Saturday. Okay, sorry. Too many people talking at once.
That's what we have a recorder-
Do you have a noise one that's in Northwood?
Yes.
Hours, normally, like, we have one at, at seven P M. You know, it allowed to, like, construction or outdoor noise or actually, I know it, I know it's different if it's on the plans, but-
We do, and it's-
I don't think it's seven o'clock, though.
It's excessive beyond a certain decibel level of property lines.
Yes.
With what has a different level of one that's not, and move off issues.
Right, that's the thing, it's continued, continue, uh, continuous sound.
For a certain amount of time, a certain decibel.
A certain decibel level, for a certain distance at the property line, or away from the source. I'm making the assumption as well that there, your operations will be inside the structure and not outside.
Not outside.
One other thing I'll mention, which I think the board has in the past, is, uh, those are the hours of operation for the, for the light manufacturing. If somebody is there at night doing bookwork with a light on, we don't consider that as part of the hours of operation.
So I have hours of operation to be added to the, the plan, Monday through Thursday, nine to seven thirty, and Friday and Saturday, nine to one.
Yep.
Okay. And I think that's the only-
Okay, I also have waiver to be added to the
Yep, okay.
Uh, as a note on the plan.
Add, add the, uh, seven B waiver?
Yes.
Add it as a note?
Just a note. And also a note, uh, if there are any deeded easements, which the surveyor would look up and determine.
Okay.
They're either recorded at the registry or they're not, but they should be, whatever there is, any rights to cross here for these folks should be noted on the plan.
Okay.
From our thing, I believe, it noted in both of our deeds.
Okay. Yeah, I believe that.
Cause the properties are held separately.
I think it's noted in all of them, like in my original one, and I know, I know it's in the-
They would just reference the book and page at the registry.
Reference book and page?
Mm-hmm.
So I have those three conditions then, the hours of operation, the granting of the waiver for seven B, Roman seven B, and then the easements.
Do we need, uh?
And then three signed and stamped copies delivered to the town.
And unnecessary federal, state, and local permits to the town?
Well-
I don't think we need the last part of it, but I think we should have that boilerplate in there.
Say with the, the local permits, we don't need a driveway permit.
Well, any-
There's no septic, cause there's no water.
Well, if something comes up that they need a permit, then they would provide a copy.
Yes.
Okay.
That's fine.
So applicant will acquire and provide copies of all necessary federal, state, and local permits to the town, period. You know, if you, business expands to, I don't know, I'm pulling this out of my hair, cause I have none, that's why I say that. Uh, you know, hazardous, minimal, minor hazardous waste, because you do some cutting with oil or something to that effect.
Yeah, well, maybe a permit, or a necessary permit to sell, so.
Right, yeah.
Yep.
Are we putting a timeframe on it?
On?
In the conditions of approval, or are we just, um, or for the project to be completed?
Two years?
Oh, that's fine.
Okay.
Yep.
The, the idea is that-
Or just for the conditions of approval to be met. There's a statute that's, that's gonna require them to
Yes.
Build it within a certain, and complete it within a certain period of time, but that just, we get these conditions met and then
Three, the three changes.
They can go about building as they see fit.
So you'd add the hours of operation, the note, to the plan, the waivers granted, and then the, the easements noted to the plan, and get that done within six months?
Oh, yeah, get that done, yeah.
Okay.
I could have that done next week.
All this is, is, is housekeeping for us. That way it doesn't hang over in limbo.
Thirteen hundred dollars a month, we don't want it to hang in limbo either.
That's why I say it's not a, it's not a, it's not a cudgel to get you to do your job, it's to make sure that there is a timeframe done that is quite reasonable, and we've done anywhere from a year, two years, three years, I think, to meet the conditions, so. Okay, six months for three changes on the notes, I think should be pretty good. And we give you a notice anyway. You get a letter if you don't do that.
Okay.
Okay, anything from the board? Hearing none. Make a motion.
Can you just read them all in sequence, is there some discussion there?
So three conditions for the, for approval, actually four conditions for approval. Prior to signing the plans, they'll add the hours of operations, Monday through Thursday, nine to seven thirty, and Friday, Saturday, nine to one. Add a note that the waiver for seven, Roman seven B has been granted on the twenty-fifth today. That any easements to the property or rights of wa, easements, rights of way, uh, deeded, deeded rights of way are noted on the plan. And they'll deliver three signed and stamped copies of the plans to the town for signature uh, within six months, and then prior to, uh, receiving a certificate of bucket. Sorry, I'm gonna strike that one.
Sorry, two occupants.
Two occupants, and see, you have a certificate of bucket, and see, okay, now it makes more sense. I think we'll skip that one.
Motion to approve with conditions as stated.
Okay, second?
Second.
Okay, motion by Ms. B Smith, second by Justin, Ms. Galicki. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those abstaining? Okay. Your side? Thank you very much.
Of course, I know you love these.
Notice, or a letter of, notice of decision in the mail, got a list all that on there.
Okay.
My grandson's got it on the back of his, you know.
Didn't need one.
No, no.
I know, I just don't make money.
So what do you do? Do it back of them? I understand that, yeah.
Sure thing.
Some are really cool, too.
Yeah, they are. Somebody asked me something about some.
There you go. Having a plane is always a good thing. Really.
I don't know why I struggle over your last name.
It's long. Everyone always asks, my entire life. Most people, for some reason, will say Nick Alowski, which doesn't even make any sense, if you really, like, look at it, like, where does the lao come from?
But you wanna say it like that, that's why, yeah.
Shikaviches, and I married a Keanarowski, so it's not like it's-
Yeah. I was in the Marine Corps where you go by last name and it was a struggle every day.
Visit, don't park in my driveway.
Literally, you have one, five.
I think it's different.
C Z I, I can't even remember. R Z C.
I went over, I helped Dover High School for a little bit. I have a product in Dover High School.
I can't remember it now. It was from elementary school.
And then I took polish in college, and I said, why do you spell your name wrong?
The tape's still rolling or?
There is no V, there is no V in Polish.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Call the equipment, I mean, I designed the old equipment too.
He's got the drawing board.
China, right.
He needs the long-distance glasses.
Best of luck.
Yeah, we'll be in touch.
Yeah.
Okay.
Jake, get back to that sheet.
Okay, so we'll call the next case, eighteen dash nineteen, Noria Energy Corporation. And get myself here.
I think this is a new one.
Oh.
See these great big ones? Look at this.
Oh, boy.
It's exciting, huh?
Yeah, cause that was really small to read.
So first up on this is before, and as the routine note, is completeness.
Motion to accept as complete.
Second?
I'll second this one.
Okay, motion by Ms. B Smith, second by Mr. Kreider, to find eighteen nineteen complete. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Those abstaining? Okay. So we're on the clock. We have sixty-five, I don't know how familiar you are with this, but sixty-five days to make a decision. You saw the last case, it was, didn't quite need that much time, but I like people, if they're not familiar, at least be aware that that's the way it all works. So why don't you introduce yourself and give us an overview, which one to do?
Sure, thank you. Uh, for the record, my name is Patrick McLaughlin. I'm a civil engineer with M H F Design Consultants out of Salem, New Hampshire, uh, here tonight, representing Noria Energy. Uh, I will start by saying that I'm with Linda in the fact that it is cold in here tonight, so that was a good move on, on shutting off the air. Okay, so the project before you is at the corner of First New Hampshire Turnpike and Mountain Ave. It's the existing Shell Station that's out there now. Site was approved, um, and developed in the early two thousands, it's about fifteen years old. If you can picture Mountain Ave, it slopes downhill away from the intersection. So this site, when constructed, was built with a retaining wall around the perimeter. Uh, this is the convenience store here, uh, with the, the drive-through lanes going around the back, so that retaining wall sits the site up above, uh, the onsite wetland area, which is the green highlighted area, um, as well as, uh, an existing stormwater basin down back, and their, um, their existing leach field is actually up at the, the top of the page oriented there. So earlier this season, the property owner noticed that, um, a section of the existing retaining wall up, um, behind the car wash facility had started to fail and, and fall over. It's at a low point of height at that location, only four to six feet high, really. So we've collectively put together a team, including myself, um, a geotechnical engineer, um, a wetlands scientist to go out and delineate the wetlands, and some, some contractors to try and figure out how do we not only repair the area that's already failed, but shore up the remaining portions of the wall? and some contractors to try and figure out how do we not only repair the area that's already failed, but shore up the remaining portions of the wall. So what this proposal is, again, the dark heavy line that you see is the wall location. These other lines and through here are the proposed contouring. So what we'd like to do is come in below the wall and buttress it, so shore it up with a mass of materials from the bottom side up. So what you see for grading includes a one-half to one slope running out from, you know, down to the wall. So a portion of that will impact seven hundred and fifty square feet of the wetlands. We visited conservation in the beginning part of the month, and we're just at ZBA for that special exception earlier this week. We were successfully granted that special exception approval for the wetland disturbance, as well as the work within the twenty-foot buffer. We've also, GOV Environmental has filed with DES for a state wetlands permit, so that is in the queue. We have a file number assigned for that, and GOV thinks that they'll get to that review hopefully in the next few weeks. It's about a month in right now. So, you know, not only does the base of the slope impact a small portion of the wetlands, it also would push into that existing detention basin that's down there. So what I'm also doing is I've taken into account the existing volume of that basin and have replicated that with some revised grades to that. It still utilizes the same outlet structure, would function the same as how the stormwater is all discharged to the, you know, towards the wetlands for the past fifteen years. We're essentially just gaining back some of the storage volume that we'll lose by having this slope pushed down towards it.
What is the wall made out of right now?
It's a, it is a block wall, but it's, the industry terms like a small block, so it's not a big gravity block wall that supports itself by its gravity weight. It's a small block wall, so our geotechnical engineer, what he surmised at this point is that likely the entirety of the wall was built with a geo grid material that ties back into the slope, and it creates this mass of earth that basically holds itself altogether. In the area behind the car wash where we see the obvious failure now, when you look at that, it's fallen down, you'd get somewhat of a glimpse of what was or wasn't behind it. I think, really, there was no geo grid, which you should start on these walls after basically two feet in height, because they're just small block material. So there should have been geo grid in here in theory, but thought being at this point, it probably wasn't installed because there's some conflicts with underground utilities that are behind it, so there just wasn't enough room to get that going yet. And so thus creating fifteen years later, the failure that we have now.
But it's really only the upper left section that's failing.
It's failed. It's failed through here. But if you look, if you stand at the base of this wall and you look, you will see that there are areas through here that have, that are crowning out now.
Okay, so you think the rest of it's gone?
So we've, and we've talked with the geotechnical engineer, do we sit back and monitor this? And put in a monitoring program that, you know, just keeps an eye on this thing? Could it be good for another fifteen years? You know, and he's the, really the recommending professional to make those judgments. And at this point, kind of the consensus is, the other thing about this is it is unique to the fact that, well, it's kind of an isolated area. So if you're going to get in there and do the work, do the disturbance, get it done, and get back out of there. So that's the approach at this point. So although it may not be critical to the month of November type failure, you know, horizon, the thought being, you know, winter conditions certainly play into, you know, future, future issues. So that's where, that's where this project's at. It's been a busy month. So when we met with James and Linda, that was probably end of August, so it took us September to get everything pulled together and filed. Trying to get all of our approvals hopefully here in October, and we'll just be pending that state approval to be able to get this done maybe in December before we get too far into winter.
Just because I neglected to do so when I opened the case, let me read the abutters list. Mike and Christine Sullivan of Northwood, Charles Corlin of Stratford, Town of Northwood, Northeast Credit Union of Portsmouth, Xanthopolis Irrevocable Trust of Vervaritas Trust, is trustee of Medford, Lori Peterson of Ethel, Mass, Daniel and Catherine McNally of Northwood. And note for the record, there are no abutters present. Okay, questions? It's not that totally cut and dry.
Yeah, we did do a good job explaining it.
So just for my own clarification, the retaining wall is being removed and replaced by that, or?
It'll stay in place.
It'll stay in place and you're just buttressing it?
Correct.
Okay.
And what's the buttress material, just big rocks?
Essentially, that's where we're, it's, we don't have a finalized design, but that's where we're headed. Yeah, just large diameter angular riprap, which is really, the only question in my mind that I had as I was thinking about this, is that's not the easiest material to transport over the road, but they'll get it here. Because normally when you use large riprap, you're processing it right on site. But interestingly enough, one of the applications in front of this EBA the other night was someone that's, sounds like they have a pit right in the area, so maybe they have some material. But, but yeah, it'll be large stone, and so, you know, the one thing that I think that the Conservation Commission, you know, agreed on as well is that, you know, it's not as much likelihood when you use a material like that that you're going to have, you know, sediments getting into the wetland, although we have, you know, erosion controls shown, and those will be established prior to, you know, anything going on in there. It's nice to know that probably just throwing a bunch of clean, dry stone in there, any stormwater that rains on it in the future is going to trickle down to the natural surface below, so we're not creating a, you know, any type of additional pervious, and so.
Not within our, not within our...
Perfect snake hibernating.
I was thinking the same thing, like snakes, small rodents, whatever, but.
I don't know about rodents. Keep the snakes, keep the rodents out.
True, true. It doesn't get a lot of sun, but unrelated to anything we're doing, how are you going to place it?
Yeah, so that was the other, so the plan would be that primary access is down through behind the car wash now, right? So we'll work our way back out. But the thought being that likely the fence and guardrail that are up there come out, they dump over.
Just dump over.
There'll be, you know, a decently appropriate sized machine down there to place it. But yeah, I don't think vehicles will have to get down in there, probably just one excavator down in there to place it.
The only hoping on my, I'll knock on wood. Hopefully the geo grid on the backside is inadequate to support the weight of that.
Thought the same thing, and to be honest with you, you know, when we got involved in this project, we were one of the first phone calls. So I was like, okay, this has got to be a team that I'm going to have to pull together here, because I have no idea if you can back construction loading up over that thing. So, yeah, that's all going to be certainly within the geotechnical engineer's final recommendation.
Okay, just curious. Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
One question I have, and I don't know how the board feels about this, but since it's my understanding we don't have a final design at this time.
Correct.
Whether or not the board is going to want, either as a condition of approval that that final design be sent to our engineer for a peer review? Whether that's necessary in this case?
How?
If I may explain.
Sure, go ahead.
How I was explained to this. So, right now, the wall as it sits has a theoretical factor of safety of one, because it hasn't fallen down. So, so in reality, the design would have been a factor of safety greater than that fifteen years ago. Okay, so the work that we do now, we're increasing the factor of safety. So although it'll be a design based in geotechnical engineering and have the stability analysis provided, it's my understanding that we're, I mean, we're really just, like I said, bumping up that factor of safety. So I have no issue providing that. I think James earlier on was thinking that, you know, structurally, just handle what we need to with the building department, but whatever the board's preference.
Well, I don't think there's anybody in the building department with the expertise to know.
But from what, if I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, but from what it looks like, you're essentially burying the entire wall.
Yeah.
Hmm.
Okay, so.
Yeah. So this site, this site could exist
Yeah.
without a wall with that slope, had it, had it been designed that way fifteen years ago. Now, you know, obviously, we understand that there was a resource area that they were designing around, and, you know, walls don't get built for no reason. But with how, the position that we're in at this point, we feel this is at a scale if you want.
Something different.
It's about fifteen feet out.
Yeah. Fifteen?
So it's roughly ten to twelve feet high, so at one and a half to one, at a ten-foot height, it'd be fifteen, so twelve would be eighteen.
Okay, thank you.
Let me say this, they can't change the impact to the wetland buffer or the wetland without coming back.
Right.
So that's already kind of built in.
Right.
As a safe.
And I would.
So the rest of it is uplands.
Right. And the the wetlands impact of seven hundred and fifty square feet is a maximum. You can't exceed that. If it's less than that, there's no reason.
And they will need to get a wetlands permit, so DES will be reviewing that.
So.
That's why I'm just asking whether the board feels it's necessary to go to any other lane.
What thoughts?
Well, I'd like you to just go over again what you talked about in terms of changing the retention pond or the drainage there. What, I need to like grab what you're saying there.
Yeah, so the existing detention basin has, you know, has basically a small slope at the base of the existing wall. There's a head wall that it outlets at now, it comes, it's actually separately distinct from the retaining wall itself. But so all the site drainage collects and discharges there. So that basin has, has a side slope that you would see in through this area. So as I, as I fill this with large diameter stone, I need to now bump out and grow the basin in another area to compensate for that storage that I lost.
Okay, so, okay, so I guess when you originally said it, I thought you were changing the amount of storage, but you're not changing the amount of storage, you're just changing where it sits.
Yeah, yeah.
Look at, if you look at sheet two.
Yeah, we can't find sheet two. We've got a lot of sheet one.
There's all, a whole bunch of drawings right here.
Yeah, all. Those are actually, those Motiva plans are the, that's the site plan from the early two thousands.
Yeah. We probably didn't get.
That would help. That would help a lot. Gary, did we bump against this enough yet, or should we? Yeah, we got, we got a couple more chances coming up. Yeah, okay, so.
That wasn't me, that was her.
Oh, I didn't see it.
So the only thing, you won't see the colors, and you won't see this dark line, because I highlighted that for the presentation benefit, but that wall is, it's noted on that.
But if you look at sheet two, in the you'll see, if you look at the building, you'll see what looks like a vertical shark.
Hold on a second, we're still holding pages.
We're still making noise for Gary.
But if you look at the top sort of rate, you'll see a detention pond that looks like a vertically swimming shark with a fin. On sheet two?
Yeah.
On sheet two, I think you're on sheet one.
You're on sheet three.
I'm on sheet three.
Shark.
You just got yourself a new title, Bob.
Wow.
Graphic artist.
Yeah, that's definitely.
Okay, well, anyway.
Where's the shark?
Sheet two?
I didn't see any sharks.
It's vertically?
It's a vertical shark.
Look for the shark.
It's a vertical shark. He's doing a little baby shark sign on my head right now.
I don't know how else you would describe the site from Moblaw.
That's a perfect description.
And it discharges over here, so once I build it, I have to compensate.
Okay. So. It's more of an orca.
Okay, whatever, anyway. But look at that image on sheet two, and then compare it to sheet three, where you have the, I don't even know what to call it.
It's an oval.
Just the oval with the triangle on it.
You have to stay with the.
That's disappointing.
You have to stay with the biological theme, so it has to be like an amoeba.
The triangle?
Yes.
Okay. Would that work?
Rather than oval.
Yeah, whatever.
Yeah, exactly.
So what's this temporary stockpile area mean? What's, is that for your?
That's where they're dumping rock in, so they place it.
Well, so in reality, that's probably going to be stripped topsoil that they move around. So put that, you know, that's an erosive, you know, we want to control that, that stockpile there. But yeah, at this point, the methodology is that it's coming over the top, so.
So.
You have to work within the wetland buffer, but, and take some of the wetland, but not a lot. You have a waiver for that anyway.
We do, and actually this, this wetland is, is unique, I guess in my opinion, and I'm not a wetland scientist, but in that if you look at the topography through there, and you can see the existing contour lines, that wetland's actually on a gradient. So typically, you think of a wetland as, you know, a low point where it's really, there's a, you know, there's a culvert that comes under Mountain Ave, passes through the site and is collected on, I think it's, is that town on property behind us there, or is that?
I don't.
This next adjacent lots of the south.
I don't believe so.
It's culverted there, and it just keeps, it just keeps going, so there is wet.
Oh, that's the SAU.
Oh, right, I always get that confused. It's SAU.
Yeah, the town is the label.
So, but, but it's, it's essentially upland most portion of the wetland. So although those kind of sound contradictory, it's not within the.
No, there's upland wetlands. I have some on my property.
Wetlands are not necessarily wet.
No, there's some pretty neat stuff that goes in upland wetlands.
There are. Okay. The
Sorry, Tom.
So the storage capacity of the detention pond remains the same?
It does.
Okay, just the area shown does not, so assuming it's going deeper?
It's just, I'm basically, I think, just reestablishing, because you know how they grow in over fifteen years anyway, so yeah, it's like four inches deeper.
Okay, just curious. That would be the, I haven't found a, well, let me just say that the consideration is that that would be the, one of the engineering peer reviews aspects that if we decided to do that, that would be what I would do, but I haven't decided that yet.
Well, the other option would be to require the submittal of the final stamped engineered design to the town, for the town record.
Yeah, and that's fine, too. I thought about that, you know, providing my calculation that I have back at the office that, that states that I'm, you know, not changing the drainage characteristics. I have no issue with that. I have, I have no issue with that.
Okay, that's fine, that's more.
Yeah, I think as long as we know that that's the case, I don't think there's any issue.
Okay.
There's nobody here from the public, right?
Correct, there's no one here for the public, so I'll open the public comment section and I'll, since there is, unless Lucy wants to comment.
Someone back there? Lucy's going hiding back there?
Pardon me?
Someone hiding back there?
If there are, they're doing a mighty fine job. So, okay.
From behind?
Yeah, from behind.
I have a question.
Just, you need to state your name.
He's, he's getting the mic.
And you're welcome to sit at the table if you want. We have plenty of microphones. You just have to pull it forward.
Mike Smith from Bass Road. I do have a question. Businesses like this are inherently kind of sloppy. You know, they have problems as far as drainage, waste, and whatever contamination. Is there going to be any test borings to see if there is anything in fact, right at this point, prior to starting work?
Uh, so that kind of leads into a bit of a discussion that we had at the Conservation Commission. So I'll start by saying that, you know, this, this work, although it involves the wetland and the buffer work, is almost minimal in its task, aside from the fact that we, they have to dump these big rocks over the edge. So there's not, it's, I don't look at it really as a, much of an excavation or earth-moving process as I do really as a structural, you know, import of material. So there's not really any disturbance or excavation into the soil. We're not trying to get closer to the groundwater table or any of those things that might, we might look at in, in other grading activities. Separately from that, there was a discussion, and it was brought to my attention at the Conservation Commission meeting, that this site did have a fuel leak at, within its history of being here. What I can say is that they were monitoring wells and there were devices in place to remediate that spill within the soils. And it's my understanding that that issue has been resolved and those monitoring wells won't be impacted by any of the work that's done here. So whatever DES requirements that are involved in continuing to monitor the groundwater quality based on that historical occurrence, wouldn't be disturbed by what we're doing here. In terms of surface runoff, you know, the site is going to continue to operate as it was before that. So there's no changes to the, to the closed drainage system.
The, the draining pattern stays the same, so anything to skim off the oil or separate the oil and stuff is still there.
Yep.
Any impacts would be essentially over the edge of the wall. And if water's draining over the edge of the wall, then the, the original design is faulty, but that's not our decision.
But it will be monitored?
Monitor.
You said by the, the system that's in place as far as?
Yeah, so, and I don't know the specifics of what that includes at this point in time. Just generally, I know that there's a, a period of remediation and testing done that's with state involvement. That's groundwater specific, so that, I believe the book's been closed on that for this site. So I don't know what the obligation is beyond that, but all of the protocols, this wouldn't impact anything that they have ongoing or, or ability to test in the future because we're not impacting any of the monitoring wells that are out there.
There's a, a monitoring well right at the edge of the, I'll call it the retail parking area.
Yeah, right.
There's one there that's shown on the plant, on sheet two. That's the only one I found so far.
There's another one, if you look up towards the exiting lane of the car wash, you'll see a drain pipe running through, there's one up there.
Okay, yep.
And we didn't complete a full site survey of the front portion of the property, as you can tell by this because it's just left blank out there, uh, but we're not making, you know, we have no impacts to that. That's, you know, you can picture the, the fueling canopy being here with the, the different dispenser islands and.
That probably should be a waiver, because we did that on the last application.
Well, it's on the other drawing.
Yeah, I.
Is it?
It's on one of the drawings.
It's on one of the drawings, right.
On the existing condition.
Well, it's, it's, it's not.
No, it's not showing on the existing.
It is shown on the record plan that I provided.
Oh, oh, okay.
Yeah, so it's included up there.
I thought there was one in the plan set, yeah.
Yeah.
No, it's not in the new plan set, but the.
It is on the, it's, it is on the, this site plan that was approved. Okay, good, just trying for consistency. And we have that on file, so.
We have extras if you need them.
Yeah.
Is the public portion still open, or?
Yes, Mike's still commenting.
Just answer.
Yeah, yeah, I, yeah, not public comment, but.
A public comment, that's, I'm sorry.
Yeah, you didn't close public comment.
I haven't, I did.
No, you opened it and then Mike came down and, and then.
That's true.
And Mike's still here, so.
That's why I was asking.
Yes, thank you. You confused me, I got two steps ahead. Okay, did I answer your question?
Yep. Thank you.
Sure. So any other public comments from people hiding in the back? Here are not an all-close public comment for this application. Okay, questions?
Well, actually, yes, you, you inferred that maybe there was more to this than we were thinking. Was there some other items that you had in mind that you should be aware of?
Or did you already address your concerns?
Pardon me?
Did you already address those concerns?
I think so.
Okay.
Okay.
I mean, the driveway in Septic is been taken care of, there's no permanent changes to it. Going from James's notes. The wetland. Because you have ZBA approval for the wetland, is that, we have that as a note?
We have a, James made a comment to add that as, as a note, so we will.
Yeah, okay, so what I thought, he's usually right on the ball. Okay, so we have five. What I'm, I'll read them as a draft. We haven't made any motions to that, but just so that the board is aware of them. What I have are seven total conditions. Prior to the signing of plans, number one, special exception that for the necessary wetland and wetland buffer impact shall be approved by the ZBA. Two, the following conditions will be made, changes will be made to the plan set at a note referencing need approved. Special exception and date of approval by the ZBA. Wait a second. Sorry. Oh, that's it, okay. Three, the applicant will acquire and provide copies of all necessary federal, state, and local permits to the town, including but not limited to an HDES wetland permit. I'm going to change that to four. Provide a stamped engineering designs for the detention pond or calculations to the town. Deliver three signed and stamped copies of the plans for signature. Five, number six, bond and escrow amounts for the site work and inspection will be agreed to between the applicant and the town engineer. Is that something you, I think we didn't even address that, but.
Well, I did have a question on that.
Okay.
I mean, in the past, this has worked fairly well, but if there is a disagreement, what happens then?
Then if the disagreement can't be resolved between the two of them.
Yeah, that's what I mean, yeah.
What would happen is that they would not be in, have met the conditions of approval. You could request, correct me if I'm wrong, you could request it.
Well, they'd have to do a compliance of conditions here and hold, they'd have to notice and dispute it. They'd have to come back to the planning board. And how we typically do it is for the site work, we have the applicant provide the detail and, and estimate to our engineer, and then they take that number and say yes or no.
Yeah, I'm not worried about that. DOT has a lot of material and labor specs and all that that I think we can use and we're going to be out there in the morning with a couple of contractors and so.
No, I just wanted to make sure I understood what happened. I mean, this has worked for us in the past, so no reason to expect it wouldn't, but just in case.
Yep. Okay.
The only thing that is always a concern is timing.
Yep, well, let me finish this, provided, prior to the beginning of site work, number seven, all bond and escrow accounts shall be in place.
Oh, so you're making that condition seven.
Correct, just reordering so that they might look a little more sense in the order process. Timing, yes, is an issue for getting them there. What were you thinking of time?
Well, I was.
Concerns.
I just don't want to run into the problem we had, but I think the way this is where that we should be fine, where a plan gets signed and then the escrow doesn't get put in place before, before the work begins or before they go forward.
That's why there's condition.
I think on this, it should be fine.
Yeah, that's why it's condition seven, and prior to beginning of site work.
But if I could just back up for a minute, you're asking as far as that drainage, just strictly for the calculations on the detention pond? Do we also not want a copy of the final design of what they?
Yes, that's, that's what I want.
Like a profile of whatever.
That's fine, you want to, whatever the geotechnical engineer cooks up, let's just.
Exactly, yes, that's it, that whole thing.
Just a copy for the file.
However you want to, the engineering report, however you want to do it, as long as it has the calculations in it saying this is what was designed for capacity, this is what we have after the effect for capacity, and whatever else is included is fine. I don't think that's, it's not subject to the review because I don't know if the board wants to have an engineering review if we can, if we want to.
Well, you, you, you folks are licensed engineers also, correct?
Yeah, I'm a civil engineer, so I'm not licensed structurally to, to design and stand something like that, which is why we have Harry Weatherby on board to do that, and so Harry will hold the, hold the bag on that one.
Yeah, I mean, as long as it's.
Yeah. I mean, that's part of our requirement. Yep, okay, any questions about those conditions?
I don't have questions about the conditions, I guess the only question that I have, I mean, you guys know that, or I, I would imagine you get the feel that we want to, we want to get in and do the work right away. Just, I know my wetlands permit will be good for five years, how long are approvals like this good for? Meaning like if for some reason at the end of a site walk tomorrow, the client says, let's monitor this area of the wall because it looks good right now, which I don't foresee happening. I just want to, in the sense that.
Typically, we'd like to have a, a deadline for completion of the project, but the idea is more that, well, at least our practice has been that the applicant has expressed a, a pull, pull a number, two-year timeframe that they can get it done, we'll typically say, fine, we'll give you three. That it's more to make sure that there is a, things get done.
Sure, yeah.
Not to crack the whip and hurry up, but more that they have a, there is a timeframe that doesn't just drag on.
How long would it be, well, you're saying that, but wouldn't a DES permit also have a time limit?
DES has a five-year time limit, so I'm just saying if, if.
Well, if this board does not set a limit, then it goes to the state, which is five years.
Right, right.
So if you don't set a limit, then it would be five years from the date of the decision, I believe.
And if you don't have a wetlands permit, you can't do the work anyway.
Right, but if we have a wetlands permit, we wouldn't have to go and disturb this area within the next five years. We'd just have to get it done by then, so.
Right.
If you guys are more comfortable with a two-year timeframe, then I'm.
It's unlikely that things would change in five years that would affect us other than the DES permit. I mean, we're mostly concerned about, in this case, the drainage and stuff being disturbed. And if the DES is saying they think things are good for five years, then there's no reason we shouldn't be comfortable.
I'm tempted to say let's, because there is the backstop of the wetlands permit expiration, let's just coincide ours with that and not give one.
No, I, I think we should set one just to phrase. Uh, but it should be, do you already, you say you already have it?
No, we don't, we don't have a wetlands permit yet, it's filed, but we, we haven't, they haven't picked it up to review it yet.
Well, maybe can we, must we put a date certain, or can we just say it expires with the wetlands permit?
Yeah, because another permit is, that we have to get that wetland permit, so otherwise it's all null. Yeah.
Yes. And that way.
So that would be. I'm just thinking to how to phrase it, the work to be completed before the expiration of the wetlands permit.
Yeah, that's fine.
Well said.
I have a little experience with this kind of stuff.
Say that again, please?
Renumbering conditions, this would be condition seven, prior to the signing of plans, or no, sorry.
It's not a condition of approval.
It's prior to beginning of site work. After the signatures, after the signature of the plans, prior to beginning of site work. Condition eight would be work to be completed.
Well, it wouldn't be, it could be a note on the plan noting a timeframe that would have to be on the plan prior to signing. You can't, you can't have a condition after the fact.
True. Okay.
Well, so just five years from the date of tonight's approval is fine. We're talking the most difference from when the wetlands permit will.
If you think you're going to get it that quick, then it's fine.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, so two, so we'll add it as condition two B, as in, yeah, sorry. No.
Yeah, here's your.
That work to be completed by expiration of wetlands permit. Which is sort of obvious, but.
I just want to be clear that you're, because the state has a five-year exemption, but it requires active and substantial work to be completed within twenty-four months.
Right.
And it also, a bond has to be in place within that timeframe.
Correct.
So you can't really let it go out to beyond that, i- unless you're making it less restrictive, if that's your intent.
That's all I was getting at, is a lot of local approvals are valid for twelve months, are valid for twenty-four months. And then if we haven't done the work, I'd have to come in and ask for an extension. So I'm just wondering what that timeframe would have been had I not even asked the question.
Typically, it would have been, we would have asked you, when do you want to get it started by?
Okay.
Say, you know, like I said, if you say, you know, it'll, it'll take a year or that, we'll give you, we'll give you eighteen months or twenty-four months. The idea is just not to, to tell you to hurry up, but more to say, you know, there's a timeframe that we don't want this hanging out there. The idea is just not to, to tell you to hurry up, but more to say, you know, there's a timeframe that we don't want this hanging out there.
So I think, and, and, and Luke Gove, who was at the conservation meeting, would, or Luca Early from Gove, would probably, would be able to speak to this best. But in terms of what the, you know, within 24 months and substantial work being started, I would say from the DES perspective, if we had in place an active monitoring program of a wall that's in potential failure near a resource area that we've received approval to disturb, in my opinion, that would be keeping us active for that, for that five-year duration. If we had something that said, we're monitoring and will activate this wetlands disturbance at the time deemed within five years. If in, if it doesn't happen in five years, the book's open to a whole new wetlands permit or whatever may be the case. And I'm, I, I have full, I honestly think that all this work is gonna get done at once. I just, where I know that that has been a discussion with our design team, that we may monitor some areas of this wall, I would just hate to have a wetlands permit that's, we could potentially be keeping open for five years and then be back to three local boards again to.
Right, and that's what I'm thinking.
I'm thinking that the, my opinion is the best approach is not to put a timeframe on it.
Okay.
Allow the state's statute to cover. And then they can argue whether or not they've met the state statute rather than, because in essence, by giving the five years, which happens to be the same as the state, it becomes convoluted. Because it almost says that you're making the exception to the state's regulation and then. That's fine.
Because they haven't started within 24 months by the state law, but we're giving them five years.
Well, but keep in mind, there's, there's portions of this work that are not related to the wetlands permit at all. So you guys could still have something that says five years and that could be based on blank, right, from here up essentially. But now that's just adding a whole other loop to it. If, if the easiest way to do it is leave it out, then that's totally fine.
I think it's the easiest way to leave it out. Because it's the uplands portion. If they're gonna fix it, they're gonna fix it if it's failing in the uplands. It's this, and if they get into it deeper and they decide they don't need to do this, that they can monitor it, then.
Yeah, but we don't want them to have to come back. I, I mean, if what you're proposing is.
They wouldn't have to come back.
So, so let's say they monitor it for five years. And they're in the non-wetlands area, they could just fix it the next day.
Five years and one day, okay.
Well, they can't fix it.
No, you can fix it 10 years from now, is what I'm under, in the, in the non-wet.
No, not on a site plan approval, no. Because they're changing, they're changing the site, and that's why they're here. Whether it's uplands or wetlands, if they're changing the, the uplands, they still have to amend the plan that's on record.
They're coming in to make some modifications. They presented those to us. If we put no date on the completion, then 10 years from now, they can do this.
No, because the state sets a five-year limit.
On the uplands part, the non-wetlands part.
Okay, the reason for it, and maybe it'd be helpful to understand that. The reason that I, there's a five-year exemption is because it exempts them from any changes to the zoning or the site plan regulations within that five-year timeframe.
I'm getting confused as to whether we're pushing for no time limit.
Yes, I think that was.
Okay, so if there's no time on it.
If there's no town time.
If there's no town time limit and they monitor it, and 10 years from now, it's still good, 15 years from now, it's still good, 20 years from now, they notice that the upland section excluding the wetlands needs some work. May they do the work without coming back?
Well, it would depend on what was, the regulations were in place at that point in 20 years.
Regulations for, regulations for what?
The town.
But if we, if we approve this without.
You, you don't, you, you don't approve it into perpetuity. This exempts from any regulations that are changed for five years.
Well, then why wouldn't we put a limit on it? And that's what I'm, that's what I'm confusing here.
The state puts that limit on it.
Forget about the wetlands.
No, the state puts a limit on them.
On the project.
Project.
On the whole project.
Correct.
Project.
Not DES.
For five years.
It's a state law that says, not DES for the wetlands, it's a state law, it's a five-year exemption for any approved subdivision plan, site plan approvals. It exempts them from having to comply with any changes to any town regulations within that period of time, provided they meet the conditions. And that would be their responsibility to.
Then that's totally acceptable, yeah.
So what would happen is, in your example, was if they monitor for five years and their wetlands permit expires, and they continue monitoring, if they find in 20 years that the wall has changed, they have to come back. If our regulations have changed at that point in time.
Cause it's reviewed under these current regulations and with state withholds that for five years.
We give them approval tonight, they have five years to do the work as they have planned. If they don't do it in that five years, they have to come back.
And that's a state statute unrelated to the wetlands.
Correct.
Correct, okay.
Correct.
Works. So as it works out, the wetland, expiration of the wetlands permit is gonna be the same for the expiration of the project approval.
Got it, okay. So if you, so if you guys are fine with that, then the question you would have asked me is, when do you plan on getting this done? I'd say, well, we wanna monitor it, and so the de facto answer is you're exempt for five years. Anything you do beyond five years legally, you're, you're.
You'd have to come back to the board if you made something different than this. Actually, no, it wouldn't matter. If you do it, if you don't do it within five years, you have to come back to the board.
Understood.
Okay.
Sounds like that works for you.
Yeah, yeah, thanks.
This is just a matter of figuring out the logic of where the state stops and where the town begins and.
Yeah, no, that's good.
But it was a good, good question.
Yeah, it was a good discussion.
Okay, so let me strike two B.
Yeah, I think I just got a little confused when we were talking about wetlands, which was five years and then and then realized this was a different.
Right.
Yeah, but that's good.
Okay, you want me to read them again?
Yes, please.
Okay. Recommend, well, conditions of approval prior to the signing of the plans. One, the special exception for necessary wetland and wetland buffer impact shall be approved by the ZDA. Two, the following changes will be made to the plan set. A, add a note referencing the approved special exception and date of approval by the ZDA. Three, the applicant will require and provide copies of all necessary federal, state, and local permits to the town, including but not limited to an NHDES wetland permit. Four.
That bug is, that flag is really bugging you, isn't it?
Number four, a stamp set of the engineering report to the town for the detention pond and other calculations as included and therein. Does that make sense, the way, whatever that.
Detention pole and detention pond and structural design?
Yeah, that's fine, detention pond and structural design, okay. Uh, number five, deliver three signed and stamped copies of the plan for signature. Number six, bond and escrow amounts for the site work and inspection will be agreed to between the applicant and the town engineer prior to the beginning of site work. Number seven, all bond and escrow accounts shall be in place.
If I could just suggest something, and it doesn't, it doesn't really matter, but one and two could be combined.
Yeah, really.
Make a shorter list.
Yeah, it doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter, but they already have it, so. They already have it.
They already have it?
Yeah.
Yes, they already have it.
Well, then take it out.
Well, then strike number one.
You can probably just take out the first one.
Number one and just renumber them. Okay. Okay. So just renumber it, so you're there now, six. Okay.
Motion to approve with conditions as stated.
All right, motion by Ms. B. Smith, second by Ms. Baldwin. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, those abstaining, okay. You good to go? Thank you.
Good presentation.
I like the colors. I know, it's great.
It's been Northwood Monday, Red Sox game Tuesday, Red Sox game Wednesday, Northwood Thursday. Red Sox game tomorrow, though.
Don't go back on Saturday.
No work on Saturday.
The Dodgers.
Break that from the record, please.
That's me. I'm from New York, so whatever.
You're not from LA.
But they were once in New York.
I think before you were born.
Doesn't matter.
Wow.
Good.
But I had to go to another team after the.
Can I just go to Pittsburgh?
No, thanks.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, internal business. I did receive an email from you with the recreation committee, things for the CIP, and I have not incorporated it yet. I have this weekend off and I plan to work on my house and CIP and plenty of horse stuff.
That's a fun weekend.
It's gonna rain, too. I have 622 kids I deal with on a daily basis, I don't need any more.
We did a big fun, we're giving out full-size candy bars.
Good for you.
Ooh, working on your house.
No, they know the school, they're doing a, a content school.
Okay.
I have two items.
Yes, go right ahead, sure.
Does everybody have their amendments, proposed amendments?
I think I do.
Kind of step out here because we're getting into November.
Correct.
Is there any chance we can run through a few of these and just say yea or nay, and I'll send them to the attorney? I think those, James has done the work, I think they're pretty boilerplate, some of them. I've read them, James has gone over them. If we can go through them, I'll, I'll go through and.
Yep. Do we have copies, do you need copies?
I have a couple on my desk.
It gets in my car.
Lynda, you're working off the copy that was passed out at the last meeting? Okay.
Susan's gonna go grab a couple more.
It's been a day.
It has.
I was really pleased when I saw how James had worked that structure. We could try to come up with a brand-new one and work it over and, but I think this is address, addresses the issue at hand. It keeps it simple, it keeps what we've had, and we can always dig into it more in another year. But I think it addresses the immediate need of defining gravel driveway versus, because we're going on what's, what's been enforced over the years.
Yes.
This backs it up.
Well, just the fact that he read the, the planner's bible said, structure, anything instructed, which were the use of, essentially the first bit, first sentence up to, before the word including.
Right, has been there for years.
It's been the case, and that's in the planner's bible. It's the exceptions or the examples that have gotten us into trouble, I think.
And that particular amendment, I believe, has been in there since 99 and I'm sure Stratford Regional, when they came up with it to begin with, queried a number of towns to see what other communities had as well.
So I'd say, we'll just do a sense of the board, amendment one, definitions, okay to send to legal?
Mm-hmm.
Or not, or shit, no.
You're comfortable with that?
Yeah.
Now, the two on the zoning board of adjustment are based on a specific change to the state statute, which says that there is now a time limit being put on variances and special exceptions when they're approved. What happened was, was when the state put that statute in place, they did not address, what about the ones that are in limbo, that have not been built or done, that are on the books? So they came up with a way for towns to address that. And this language is what the statute says that we need to do in order to comply with the state law. So that's pretty well boilerplate. If we wanna go forward and limit them, the ones, the old ones, because there may very well be some, we see them pop up. Perfect example is the application you have in front of you right now for Millstone. They received a special exception for non-residential use in the Conservation Overlay District almost 10 years ago. And they, you know, a lot of time's gone by, but that still stands. But those won't occur in the future if we adopt these regulations. It, we're gonna have to go through a time period of, say, three years out. But after that, the, the older ones will be off the books.
I, I'm okay going ahead with, with amendment two. Anybody in disagreement? I was not here, but we still have enough.
Yes.
Okay, amendment three, I think this is the same.
It's part of the same thing, yeah.
It's just procedures for the same thing. Oh, we went ahead and you got a sense of the board to give.
This one, this is two years, you said three years.
Well, it's two years after the expiration of the notice.
Right.
But they get a year or two.
Yeah, there's a year before this becomes effective.
Right.
So it essentially ends up being three years.
We're just doing sense of the board on whether we wanna send these or not to legal review.
We had gone through these before, I thought.
Yeah.
I thought they were all good.
Yep, well.
Well, we haven't really got that on the record, that the board's.
Oh, I see.
Wants to move forward with them.
So that's, I'm seeing head shakes for amendment three as well.
Yeah.
Yep.
Uh, four.
He was gonna bring some models from Dover, he said, yeah.
Models from Dover, I think we're, we're not quite ready for four.
What is it that's holding up on that?
James is gonna bring some models, extra models.
Yeah, number four needed some work.
Oh, okay.
Said it needed some work.
Okay, for steep slope.
For steep slopes.
All right.
Uh, I have a note on five, good to go. Cause it's just, it's only striking the words new and newly created.
I'll set with that.
Set with five. And then.
Everybody said check with the lawyer, what was that one? Was that about the agritourism?
Yeah, I think that one is what we need to hold off on tonight. I, I think we need a little more information on that. I'll check with James on that one.
Yeah.
But that'll at least get some.
Out there and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then at that point, we can confirm them and put them on the ballot. Hold the public hearing first.
Well, at least we got some in the hopper and.
There you go.
Right, exactly.
Got some checks.
Are there almost six? They're only six? I thought there were seven.
I think he pulled one because of.
Okay.
Doesn't matter. You asked.
Just wanted to double check.
Brendan. Brendan. I got one other item. I received a letter today from Strafford Regional Planning Commission. I did reply that I felt that it... My personal opinion was that it's very short notice for one thing, and they agreed that they had just... But I told them that I would, I would give you this tonight and there's an awful lot to it to wanna try to decide this, if the planning board has any interest in this. I really see it as something that either the, and they came back and said, well, maybe the town administrator would just send a letter, but it seems more as something that the Conservation Commission should be involved in. But if you want to read it, Bob, go ahead.
You want me to read it out loud?
Sure.
Sure. NHD. Program specialist at NHDES, Concord, referencing the Strafford Regional Planning Commission's 2019 Drinking Water Source Protection Grant Application. Dear Mr. Madison, on behalf of, this would be Northwood, the town of Northwood, I am pleased to express our support for, this is a draft. So, I'm gonna read it, filling it in as the language would be approved, or might be approved. So, just think of it that way. It has not been approved. Uh, I am pleased to express our support for and commitment to the Strafford Regional Planning Commission's Drinking Water Source Protection Grant Application. While the 2008 USGS Seacoast New Hampshire Groundwater Availability Study confirmed the adequacy of the state's drinking water supplies, a number of factors threaten the future quality of this invaluable resource. They include the combination of population growth and state and local land use and policy decisions. Emerging issues, some related to climate change, have the potential to threaten source water quality further. New precipitation patterns may lead to more severe droughts that will reduce aquifer recharge. Sea level rise may render coastal freshwater resources unusable. And emergency contaminants may degrade the quality of coastal and inland water resources. Long-term planning to mitigate the impacts of potential threats to drinking water sources has been limited since the USGS study. In the meantime, drought conditions have become more severe. In October 2016, for example, twenty percent of the state was in extreme drought. One hundred sixty community water systems had implemented water restriction or ban, and thirteen municipalities had banned all outdoor water use. Insert sort description of your interest in source water protection here. The Strafford Regional Planning Commission has proposed a two-phase planning initiative to help municipalities in the region protect their drinking water supplies in the future. Northwood looks forward to participating in the first phase of the project in which SRPC will produce the following. A set of regional maps showing the locations of drinking water supplies and providing contextual details to better communicate potential threats to drinking water sources and opportunities for their protection. A decision-making tool to help municipalities identify and select drinking water protection actions tailored to their needs. A pilot project to demonstrate water resource protection tools. These resources will be available, essential to the later development of long-term drinking water supply plan for southeast New Hampshire region. During Phase Two, we anticipate that SRPC will apply for a second round of funding to complete the plan in 2019 and will request additional support at that time. In support of SRPC's drinking water source protection efforts, Northwood will review mapping products and advise on local protection priorities. Serve on a user group to provide the development, to guide the development of the decision-making tool and submit a proposal to serve as the pilot project to be conducted as part of this initiative. If Northwood is selected to serve as the pilot project, we would be particularly interested in working with SRPC to, in parentheses, pick pilot, pilot project type or two. Uh, which includes, uh... Options are, prepare a master plan, Water Resources Chapter, new or an update, develop an aquifer protection overlay district zoning ordinance, develop a conservation subdivision zoning ordinance focused on water resource protection, facilitate municipal collaboration discussions such as extension of drinking water service areas, water resource protection plans, identify future drinking water resource areas, develop a saltwater intrusion analysis model ordinance, we don't have to do that, prepare a source water protection grant proposal for groundwater reef classification, prepare a municipal water resource management plan, develop a municipal prioritized land conservation plan for the source water protection. There's a couple of those that would apply to us. Last paragraph, Northwood will provide local knowledge and expertise to help ensure the final products developed in this initiative are user-friendly, reflect local priorities, and will help protect drinking water sources throughout the Strafford Region sincerely, Town and Northwood Planning Board. Take over that fast enough.
So this is, to express interest.
Our support for SRPC to apply for this grant.
Uh, well, I, I thought there was a little bit more of a twist to it, Bob, in the sense that we're sort of putting ourselves in the running to be one of the, quote, "selected" communities, did I understand? So, we might not be included.
Correct.
Okay.
Can I make a suggestion?
Sure.
I know it sounds like a very commendable thing that they're asking, and I'm sure most of the planning board members may support every aspect of it. But I, I'm not sure that the planning board, at this point, has enough information and can also commit the town to this without knowing more information as to the level of time and potential staff or whatever's needed to complete this. And I would suggest that if you are interested, that you, instead of sending the letter to Strafford Regional, provide a letter stating that you would assist in this and send it to the interim town administrator, who will be in tomorrow, who could, uh, maybe be in a better position to write that letter for the town that is deemed.
And I'm just wondering, Bob, that it's, it's not just the planning board that might be interested in this or support it. I mean, just, I mean, just as an example, Bob Young with the Water District has expressed some of those concerns. That would be well addressed by this. And in addition, having this information and this, the work that they're talking about also would give us the information and the sort of oomph to back grant requests to do conservation easements and things like that. So, when you have a study like this in place and then you go to apply for the grants, if you have the, the information that this work would provide, it really gives you a leg up in terms of getting money to conserve the land.
Right.
So, there's, I mean, there's, I think there's a lot of positive, but I agree with Linda. We, we can't commit resources for the town. I mean, the selectmen would really have to commit the resources or volunteers.
Or make the determination what project would be.
I'd love to see this and all of this, but we do have to be careful.
Yeah, I get the impression is that they want, they will apply and they would like towns to show their support of it. Because that is probably one of the criteria that the grant applications are being judged on. And not just a matter of support, but saying yes, what we're actually willing to do. And that's exactly what, where I agree is that we have some hedging on what we're committing ourselves to do. However, I think what I'll, what I'll do, then I say aye specifically, not as part of the town, not as the board, but just for me, is to look at the project options because I think we have done some of them. We have a Water Resources Chapter that is being, has been drafted in a master plan. Might be out of date, but.
But we got something.
We got something. We've talked about a conservation subdivision zoning ordinance or an overlay area.
Overlay area.
Area currently for, for conservation, but we haven't done it for water protection.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Yeah, okay.
Or water resource protection, but we have had Jacob Smire presented in the last two years, I think. When did he come?
When was that?
Jacob Smire. Former Water.
Time flies, Bob.
I know, time flies. Okay, maybe, maybe, since my term on the board, time on the board, he's presented and essentially said that the, the... Is it Big Woods? What's our resource, what's our overlay zone that's?
The Big Woods is Janus Pond area.
Yeah, the Big Woods area is, is the recharge zone for the western part of town. And that if we wanted to.
Bob's already seen this from what I've been told last night. No?
Nope.
You have a copy of it.
I was told that somebody got a copy from you.
Me? Maybe.
Yeah, you and Jeff, I'm sure have the electronic version of it.
Electronic copy, yes.
You went over with Grace.
Yes, yes, yes. Okay, anyway. But that part of town, if, if the Village Water District ever wanted to expand to cover the entire town of Northwood, that would be their area to use for supply.
Anyway.
So, anyway, where I'm, what I'm thinking is maybe what I'll do for, because we have our next meeting on the November ninth, is see if I want to tweak the language of this a little bit to take care of... Let's say, express it from the planning board's perspective. Supply that to the interim town manager and maybe, or administrator, and maybe she can forward it to other interested parties.
I think the problem is this is a very tight deadline for that.
It's gotta be done.
Mm-hmm. But I will check on that, but certainly we can move forward with that concept.
Do, does the board want to express any interest in supporting a letter to this?
I think we should express interest in supporting it and say that, you know, from a town resource perspective, provided we, you know, have a lot of this existing stuff, you know, we certainly would be willing to commit to providing it. And maybe that's the way we word it, you know? For all those things that they're requesting, just say, provided the town has this, you know, information in hand, we would readily provide it as opposed to committing to create it or develop it or.
Selectmen are meeting next Tuesday?
No, it's been canceled.
It has been canceled.
We finish the budget on Tuesday. We met around four Tuesdays in October.
I, I thought there was something else on the thirty-first. There were articles, I thought.
She already scheduled the day for something else.
No, I, I haven't, I, I scheduled every Tuesday, but they said it was.
Well, if it's been canceled, it's been canceled.
Thirty-first.
The timeframe on this is mine soon.
A week out.
Well, we as the planning board could commit to providing what information we have on hand, like our overlay districts and all that type of information. I don't think we can commit to resources and then that would come from the selectmen or via the selectmen.
I think we could do some, like, we'll review mapping products and advise on local protection priorities. You know, that doesn't make any resources.
The problem is we only have a town administrator on Mondays and Fridays.
Serve on a user group to guide the development.
She has a lot to do already.
That's I'm okay with.
Yeah, I mean, maybe you can just delineate those that we can do and just leave it at that.
Submit a proposal to serve as the pilot project to be conducted as part of this initiative. I don't think so.
I didn't say it was.
Then we can just strike that whole sen, whole sentence. I'm okay with that.
Bob, could we, could we make a motion to empower you to edit appropriately and return to Linda?
Oh, so Bob can do the CIP, his housework, and this letter this weekend. He said planning board work, so.
I did say planning board work. Essentially, the only thing, only change I'm making to this aside is the letter where it, or the paragraph where it asks us to do stuff, I can read what I've done. In support of SRPC's drinking water resource protection efforts, Northwood will review mapping products and advise on local protection priorities. Serve on a user group to guide the development of the decision-making tool. And do that, and serve. That's it. We've, I've struck, struck the sentence. Uh, if we're selected to serve as the pilot project, we'd be particularly interested in working with SRPC to pick the pilot project, which doesn't make any sense to me because that's committing the stuff that we don't know, but it still supports the efforts for the grant.
Did you write that on your copy?
I did.
Are you gonna do that or do you want me to do it?
More than happy to give it to you. It's just, it's deleting language, not adding anything.
So, do we need a motion to submit that as a planning board?
I think what I'd suggest is.
Are we sending this to the town administrator?
If we've made the edits that we can cover ourselves, I think we're all set.
You want to do it from the planning board perspective? I'm fine with doing it from the planning board's perspective.
Well, however you want to do it, or who you want to send it to is up to this board.
I think if, if you're comfortable with what you've deleted, that we can deal with it, then I'd say let's just do it because I think it's important to express interest.
I wouldn't mind a motion to otherize me to do so.
So moved.
Second. You got it.
Okay.
No, I defer.
I don't think I have much of hell.
Give it to Lee.
Okay, discussion? Uh, essentially, I've already read the language that I'd, I'd used, just add a few little more. That'll, if there are changes after we get back from whoever our interim town manager needs it, then I don't have to go back to the board to do it.
And you want us to go directly to them?
I think so.
Yeah.
Okay, with your signature.
Yeah, I'll sign it. I'll sign it for the board if the board votes yea.
Yeah.
Which we haven't voted yet. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, those abstaining, okay.
I think this is good move.
So, yeah, I would suggest, though, that maybe give a copy of that to Conservation Commission?
And Bob Young, please.
And Bob Young and Water District?
Yeah, please.
As well.
And maybe there.
And even if we change, might be such a thing that, you know, we send one letter with multiple signatories.
Well, I can tell you the Conservation Commission will not be meeting before their deadline.
Okay.
Oh. Bob might be able to do something, though, as the Water District.
Yep.
I know he's concerned, so that would be really good to at least give him a chance. Maybe give him the whole thing unedited so he knows.
Right.
Well, I'm gonna just bump the email to him from Strafford Regional.
Yeah, okay, yeah, great.
And then he'll have it.
Great, yeah, perfect.
He'll have all the information.
Yeah, perfect.
And I might, I'm wondering if the Conservation Commission chair would be willing to sign just as the chair?
Not without metering, she can't, not without a meeting.
Okay.
She can't commit to.
Yeah.
Well, as an individual? Yeah, I don't think so.
No.
Just double check it.
Some fly strips in the budget.
I know, my goodness, these flies are driving me crazy.
Okay, other internal business?
We need a Nerf, one of those Nerf ball things, we could shoot at it or something.
Electronic zappers.
Okay, other? Okay, other business? We did the ordinance changes generally, then I'll, I'll bring those to, once they're finalized and on the ballot. I generally go over them at deliberative session, and Ms. Boudreau has a chance to include language in the voter's guide.
Okay.
Well, I'm not saying, I'm not saying you have to write it, saying as a reminder that when we send out the voter's guide, that usually there's explanations for zoning ordinance changes attached to that.
James will likely do.
Yeah, I am not qualified to do that.
Explanations on.
I'm not expecting you to do that. I'm just saying, as a reminder that when that's being developed, to make sure that the zoning board amendment, explanations are included.
I usually proofread it so I make sure it's there on there.
I figured there's enough eyes watching it, okay. Any other?
It's a good point, we don't want to leave them out.
No, because like I said, I had somebody who came up, I think, at the last town meeting, said, well, if the planning, if I don't understand it, the planning, the zoning board change, I vote no. It's like, your point's well taken, but I'll try to explain it as best I can.
It's why we have public hearings.
We have public hearings.
Unfortunately, they're not well attended.
Correct. Okay, any correspondence? Anything else on their agenda tonight?
Linda, you said you'll send a reminder on the sidewalk for case eighteen thirteen?
The seventeenth.
At nine o'clock, I double-checked my notes.
Yeah, you'll send a email to.
And where are we meeting?
Oh, that's, did they have a meeting point for that? We just set a date.
They're sitting at their weigh station.
I think everybody's gonna meet, it's a Saturday morning.
Yep. But they're open.
Right.
And there's not a lot of parking, and if we have.
Oh, okay.
Conservation Commission and planning board members showing up.
What about going up on the road a little bit? Is it travelable? I mean, can people pull up on that woods road that goes up there? No?
They don't have any crushed gravel. They don't, they don't have any materials right now. They, they got space to park. They have hardly any materials.
Well, I was, what I was.
It's not the time of year people are buying a lot.
They are open.
By the third week in November, people won't be buying park boards.
They have no crushed gravel, they have no inch and a half stone, they have nothing.
Okay.
So they're not gonna generate it in the next couple of weeks.
You haven't seen one of those big crushers will come in.
They're crushing stone, you know, they're.
They are. I know, we ordered some from them, the town.
Well, anyway.
But they're still plenty of parking.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's, there's parking, just, my, my thought was, as I was driving up, was to see if the realtor that we just approved with the new shed and the new paving is open and.
Oh, the Anthony's.
Whatever it is, same side of the road.
Tom Chan, up here?
Anthony's.
Oh, yeah, she's open.
No, no, I know she's open, but if she is not open on Saturday of the sidewalk, if people could park there.
Yeah, it's closed, so you'd have to.
You know, I mean, you'd have to walk along Route Four, but it's not that far.
And that's really safe.
There's a door to it, I mean.
I think.
Doesn't matter, that's not us, for us to decide. Anything else? We're adjourned at nine oh.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We're adjourned at nine oh eight. Thank you.